The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
All right, I'd like to call these special board meetings to order. And the goal of this meeting tonight really is to take the work of our three task forces that we've had, we've convened over the last few years, our Facilities Task Force, our Secondary Task Force, and most recently, our Boundary Task Force. And they've given us a lot of opinions and looked very carefully at the issues that they were, they're studying during their task force. So we have that in front of us. And really, the question the board will be asked is, what are, it will be to look long-term as to our facilities usage and how to best use the facilities that we have based on student enrollment capacity and programmatic needs across the district. So our team, Facilities Team, and I know the superintendent and the cabinet have been working on this for quite a few weeks now, and they would like our input as a board so that they can then move forward and dial into more specific recommendations that they'll bring to us later. So this is more of the high-level guidance from the board that they're looking for. And I'll, I don't know who's next.
Joe.
And then, we have Joe Donavitt also here, who's going to facilitate this meeting for us, and you've been here before, helping us with Facilities meetings. So at this point, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Warren, and thank you again for the opportunity, everyone, to be here. I may be familiar, some of you are familiar to me. I was last in the district shortly before your referendum. I helped facilitate your Facilities Task Force, and so grateful to be here again. Before we get into the norms and a little more specifically about what we're going to do here today, what I think is important for you to know about me is that I'm an outsider coming in. I don't have children in this district. I don't live in this district. I am a neutral third party. I'm coming in as an outsider. That also means that there are some things, as much as I have been following from afar, I know a tremendous amount of work has been done. Keep in mind that there are going to be some things that I don't know, and so really, truly ask for clarification if I skip over some things that you need to spend time on, or if I spend too much time on things that you say, "Yeah, Joe, we've gone into that," if we've got, okay? But again, really happy to be here. Again, as Dr. Warren said, our work tonight will center on large questions about moving forward to the district. Again, tremendous amount of work has been done related to long and short-term goals, related to managing enrollment, and ensuring continued improvement of the school district. Our work today will not be to create specific sets of actions. It will be really kind of, if where we are right now is at the 30,000-foot level, we're going to get to about the 15,000 or maybe 10,000-foot level, and we're going to create some parameters where District Administration can come back to you with some more specific recommendations. So after we discuss the norms of the meeting that we're going to do in a second, we're going to take a look at the findings of the previous task force. And as Dr. Warren mentioned, over the last several years, the board in the district has done a lot of work, great work, in bringing the community members together in considering evidence, synthesizing data, and ultimately making some decisions. Again, I was involved in one of the task forces in the past, and again, I've watched from afar as some of these other task forces have done their work. And a lot can be used. We can use these recommendations for your future efforts. So what we're going to do in a moment is we're going to review the work of those groups. Then Dr. Langenfeld will discuss a guiding change document. That's a document that outlines the district's realities and the why and how of acceptable means. And it may be helpful to see Dr. Langenfeld's document as a lens through which the district's needs and challenges can be viewed and acted upon. Then Mike Stengel will discuss issues of enrollment versus capacity, and then we'll allow some questions to be asked of Mike, and then he'll discuss urgent needs. We're going to talk long-term and short-term, and ultimately, we're going to get to the question of, "Now what?" The second part of the meeting. Again, we're not going to create a specific plan, but what we will do is we will look at, again, creating some parameters for which you can do that work. So we're going to have a facilitated conversation. Okay? So with that, Laurie, we'll go to the next slide if we could. I'd like to start with some meeting norms, and this is something that I like to do. Truth be told, I think that Laurie probably created these many years ago. I completely have stolen this, and I've used this in districts all over the state and all over the country when I've done this work. This started here, and I understand that you're familiar with these norms. I think that they're very important for us to keep in mind. I'm going to read them for you. Again, the expectations that we have for each other is that we participate fully. We're going to be present here. We're going to limit our use of the devices, and we're really going to work while we're here. We're going to ask for clarification when it's needed. I will stop during our conversation and allow you to ask questions of District Administration just to ensure that you are fully understanding. We'll engage in open and honest conversations. I will tell you, folks, that I may at some points come off as a little rude. I apologize for that if I happen to cut you off, or if, maybe if you're not speaking and if I bug you and ask if you have anything to add. I may do that. We're going to function as an action-oriented, solution-finding body. We're going to remain open to new ideas. We're going to respect diverse discourse, and we're going to own and support collective decisions. Let me just stop there and ask if there are any questions from board members about our meeting norms? And if you could just, this is sort of like sitting in the exit row of an airplane, right? Where if you could just kind of nod your head and everybody's agreeing to this before we move on, all right? Sounds good. So these will be the meeting norms, and again, part of my job is not only to move the conversation along, but to also ensure that these meeting norms are met, okay? So with that out of the way, let's move on, and let's look at the task force comparison document that you have. And I'm going to give you a little bit of time to take a look at this. Couple of things to keep in mind as you're considering this task force document. Again, three different task forces over the last couple of years. And important to understand that the charges that were used by the task forces to create these documents were different, okay? So you're going to see some similarities and some differences in the recommendations. And again, the charges that were presented to these groups by the board were a little bit different. I'm going to give you a few minutes to take a look at this and allow you to ask any questions. Board members, do you have any questions about this that you can address to your staff?
The Boundary Task Force, did they not recommend magnet programs specifically, or were they just recommending to reproduce popular programs and market the ones we have?
So it was, so it was magnet schools, but yeah, that idea was, that idea.
Okay.
So it kind of come back to us.
Okay, so they did use the word magnet.
Was it?
Did they use the word magnet programs in their schools, or?
No, it was more about, their conversation has been around Da Vinci, Aldo are very popular, why wouldn't we consider something like that on the West Side as well?
Okay.
Given the under-protective.
Yeah.
I believe that they were kind of using the term attractor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's right.
Other questions, board members?
I guess, you know, it's important to have, I supported having all these task forces, and I would do it again. But when I look through all these lists with only a very few exceptions, it seems to me that they're, it seems like we're kind of left with things that were probably very obvious that we would have insisted on anyways, or, again, it's just a few, a few exceptions. And sometimes they even, yes, some, sometimes they even, two of them contradict about the, about an additional high school, and maybe times, times change, but like how we're, how, I just wonder how we're, and if, if the answer is it's just confirming what we knew, then maybe that's okay, but I don't see a lot here that guides things differently than probably if the board had just done it by themselves. Of course, they were all going to be, everyone I would think would have looked for fiscally responsible, not increasing, you know, not changing the board policy to allow longer bus rides, to listen to community, to have community spaces. So I don't know what's all that different about this, or if it's just that we confirmed, mostly confirmed what we knew, then that's, if that's the answer, then that's the answer.
Let's, let's, let's hold on that for just a second. Let's return to that in just a minute. Any, any technical questions that anyone has before we, we open up conversation starting with Mr. Becker's suggestion? Anything technical? With that, again, let's open, let's open things up. Mr. Becker provided some, some thoughts. What are your thoughts? What, what comes to mind?
So I'm just going to challenge you a little bit on that, because I'm, you've been here doing this for a long time, and I have not. So actually, I find this really useful. So that's all my feedback on that comment.
But I mean, we would have, no matter what, we would have chosen, so we would have said solutions have to be aligned to the mission and vision, obviously.
I get your point, I do.
The fiscally responsible, and if, if what the.
No, that's, that's the charge. That's what we outlined to the Facilities Task Force that their charge was.
Oh, okay.
And the recommendations are the next page. So on each of these, the charge, the charge of each of the task forces is on the first page, and then the.
Okay, I was going to think too much on the.
The recommendations are the next page. Yeah, I find this helpful, if for nothing else, that it, I mean, we are members of the community too, and we have ideas of, you know, what we think we would want to do. It's helpful to me to have a broader representation of our community, letting us know what they think. And then, you know, you're right, in many cases, these are things we might have thought of on our own, but I think it's helpful to know that, that as representatives of the community, we have the community voice in, in this decision, that, these decisions that we'll make moving forward.
Well, we also value getting additional community voice and.
Presenting this as an opportunity for community engagement.
Moving forward.
Moving forward.
Right, right.
But even, I mean, that's why we sought people's opinions. We sought people's input.
I have a question about the process of this, so anyone who can speak to this, but.
I know that they're, oh, scared me, sorry.
We can hear you now.
Sorry, now I lost my train of thought, scared myself. How was the community, were these, were the people who participated on the, each of these task forces provided these outcomes after participating? And how are they being, and are they being involved moving forward in any meaningful way? Or was this kind of it? They were provided the solutions or the recommendations, and then that was over?
They actually brought.
They came up to the recommendations. I know they did, but.
And they presented to us.
Oh, they did, okay.
Yes, yeah, each group did.
So they together saw it all the way through?
Right, right.
Okay. And were they involved in any way moving forward after that, Katie, or?
We're now moving forward, and they will be, they will be brought.
This is their work product.
Okay, okay. Yeah, sorry, I'm, was not part of that at all.
No, 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 that's.
That's why I mean, it's, not everyone, like, I'm pretty new, you're even newer, so, you know, for some of us, this is going to be kind of.
And people apply to participate in this process.
Having, having led the Secondary Capacity Task Force, there was overlapping membership of some of the people from that, that onto the Facilities Task Force, and they knew that the work they were doing was more of a temporary solution, planning for these next steps. But I would also say that having, ensuring multiple voices and plurality of perspective can be really challenging in a situation like this where there's strong, strong sentiment on various sides. And just with that, that brief experience with the Secondary Task Force, trying to make sure that multiple voices were heard and multiple voices were considered in the process was not an easy task. And when you have some of your own personal biases for being part of the system and structure for which you're trying to change, having an external perspective was, was, seemed helpful, and that's part of the reason why we looked for that in the second group after the Secondary Task Force.
Before we move on, any other thoughts, board members, what you're seeing here? I'd encourage you to keep this handy. We'll likely be returning this as we continue our conversation. But for now, we will ask Dr. Langenfeld to talk about the guiding change.
Thank you. This, the guiding change that you have is, is familiar. We've had a number of iterations depending upon which area we're looking more deeply into. We did have a Facilities Planning document, if I'm not mistaken, this one that we brought before the board. I think the, the why is really important. We're currently at a place where we have what we would consider enrollment inequities. And by that, I would offer that in some schools, we are, we may have one section of a classroom that gets to a certain enrollment level, and then now we have two tiny classes, whereas another, a classroom in another school may be at 25, 26 students at, at the top of the size, class size limit. And so there are some inequities. The other piece around that is that some students may not be able to access all of the coursework that they would like and so forth, so we've looked at that. Another reason we need to really look at our facilities in terms of are they the right size to deliver the programming that we want for each and every child to achieve our mission is to really look at where the growth is. There is still potential growth on the east side of our community, but not necessarily on the west side. So that's, that has been and will continue to be part of the ongoing conversation and a very important variable, variables to consider. We're living in a very changing educational landscape, so when we go down this road, we can show, and I know that the different task forces really look deeply at what's happening across the district in terms of open enrollment, in terms of, you know, Mike, when he talks about here shortly about the actual projections, we're going to see some declining enrollment as well, which is something new that we have not experienced in the past, several years anyway. A lot of our students do intra-district transfers and move about the district. We obviously have a new landscape around vouchers, and that has impacted our schools. And then more than 15% of our students move around, some in, within the district, sometimes there are outside of the district, come back in. So there's a lot of mobility that we see. Our instructional practices and our, and our space may, in many cases, no longer align to what we're trying to do in terms of current and future programming. So that's an important variable as we talk about maker spaces and spaces where kids can stretch and move and have movement breaks and so forth in, in spaces. So that's part of it. Our current feeder attendance for elementary to secondary is not always ideal. Sometimes you've got two schools that, or kids have to go when they enter middle school, they may go to two different middle schools. I had conversations in one of our middle schools recently with children who originally had intended numerous middles, or elementaries were all coming together, and that works over a period of time, but sometimes it's to keep those cohorts together is a little more ideal. I referenced the projections showing some declining enrollment. Mike will talk about that. Slight increase in, in at least one of our schools, we'll talk about that. And not all, there's that equity piece, and it's an important, critical piece, is to ensure that our programs are equitably accessible for all kids. And then transportation patterns. So that's where we started. When we look at the how, I think one of the things, and it, and it really shows up in that document that you were provided around the board charge, that public consultation piece is a critical, critical part, and will be throughout this entire process. This is something that, to, to everyone's comments, Dr. Warren's and, and Mr. Becker, everyone, I think, believes very strongly in the importance of public consultation. But we also have to keep in mind fiscal impact as well. And when Mr. Stengel starts speaking about some of our schools, we have a lot of empty space in some of our schools. And so then it's time to have a deeper conversation about, is this the time where we have to talk more strategically about where programming is located, even to the point of consolidating in some cases? So that's, that's, that's a difficult conversation, or is it shifting boundaries? And up to this point, there wasn't a lot of recommendations, there aren't a lot of recommendations that I can see in the other task forces that have gone down that road. But I think as we've started to watch more carefully and deeply the educational landscape, we do see some shifts in enrollment and, and some significantly opportu, some significant opportunities to right-size our schools so that we can leverage the very best programming for our students. And again, many of the things that you've seen before in terms of programming and services are really the how that lead us to exactly where Mr. Becker was referencing, the fact that we need to make sure we're aligned to the district mission and vision and priorities, making sure that we have greater efficiencies so that we can deliver the highest quality programming for our students. Obviously, that voice is very, very important, as well as flexibility. I think one of the things as we look at the changing educational landscape, that flexibility is a really critical part of how we move forward and, and support children in their learning as well. So again, if I'm not mistaken, Laurie, all of this will be posted so that if people wanted to read more deeply into these documents, we'll have that available to our community.
If that's what the board prefers.
If the board prefers that, okay. So, and, and this is a document that I believe has been shared publicly more than one time. Yeah, so, anyway. Any questions on this, these, this document? Again, we've, we've had it before. I think one of the things that I would ask to think about is, are there other things that aren't on here? And I think that'll come into a deeper discussion as we move forward. Are there things that you've thought about or community members have talked to you as board members about that say, "You know, what about this?" So, and I know that when you get into the deep discussion, and I, I'm sure when Mike starts showing you enrollment data, more questions will come. So I'll, I'll stop at that, and, and.
Any questions, board members? Again, we'll use this as we move forward. Okay?
Did you get one? Did you? Do you have this?
When I was just speaking.
No.
Oh, there was one on the floor. Oh, I had to.
You didn't get those, you have two.
What, the guy who changed?
Yeah.
Right.
Need to.
Oh, no, I do have one, I lied.
Katie, you don't?
I don't.
There's one on the floor. I gave you these begrudgingly. Really, you don't want to just say what else? All right, we're good.
We're good. Any questions? Okay, we'll keep things moving, and now we'll talk with Mike Stengel about enrollment versus capacity.
Okay, so I'm going to go, be going through this three-page handout that's, has the yellow lines on it with the red. So just recently, we've completed our 2018-19 enrollment projections. So the numbers that you're looking at are our most recent projections. We've seen a, a change in our enrollment in the last two years. For the first 12, 14 years that I had done projections, every year we had some increase in enrollment. Some years it was very minor of, you know, 20, 30 kids. Other years, we had student increases of, you know, 100 or more. We were seeing a lot of increase in our elementary school, and that has now filtered up into the middle school and is, is reaching our high school level. What has changed in the last two years, which we were unexpected, is that we've had a decline in enrollment of over 300 students each in the last three years. So that has now changed our projections because we use historical data to project off of, and we look at how these students will be filtering through our system. We only have two years, like I said, the first 12 years or so were all increasing, and now this last two years have, have been a reduction in, in our enrollment. So again, we don't know if this is just an unusual couple, two years here, or if this is going to be the new trend. And after we have another few years, we'll, you know, have a better feeling on it, but so looking at our.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Just to make sure I heard you correctly. So you said in the past two years, we've lost 300, about 300 students each, so 600 total in the past two years.
It's over.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Yes.
Could you clarify? Did we lose them? When you say that, what do you mean by that?
Okay, I guess our enrollment, total enrollment has declined by over 300 students.
But that would not be calculated, when, when a student chooses to live still, live in Green Bay and choice into a neighboring school district, that's not this number.
Yes, I, yes, I need to clarify this. We have two different student counts. We have, you know, John Cash's student count, which are, are actual resident students that we, John can explain it better than I can, but basically, he counts for revenue. And then my, the, the projections I do, I use a, a head count more or less, the number of students that are actually attending our school. So these include all the students that have opened enrolled from other districts, but they do not include students that are, are resident students that have transferred out of the district. Is that clear? So what I project, I project on so that I look at how many students we need to accommodate in our schools is what I use. John's projections are done for financial reasons on what our revenue would be. So we have two different numbers there, and there's, John helped me with this, but I think there's approximately about 2,000 student difference between, 1,800 to 2,000 student difference between the actual students that, I project as far as in our district and our revenue students.
Correct, but what I would say is that 300 per year is fairly consistent with head and membership count. So we have seen a decline in membership count over the past two years. So we have seen a decline in membership count over the past two years, which equates to the inability to generate that revenue, which is approximately five and a half million dollars.
And it's, I just heard this on the radio maybe a month or two ago, that across Wisconsin, school districts are seeing declining enrollment as a statewide trend. Is that, is that correct?
Absolutely. Within the last almost five to six years, that's been true across the state of Wisconsin.
So the children just aren't physically there?
Correct.
They've, they've moved out of the area, out of the state, they're physically not here, is that accurate?
I think statewide, you could say that.
Yeah.
Certainly, there is more movement, and you factor in open with vouchers, lower birth rates.
I was gonna say, is the birth rate now?
Sure. That it all leads to projections like you see Mike have. So I guess, we're not trying to confuse you, but generally speaking, the membership and head are running along. So as he sees a decrease, our membership count has reflected that as well. And that's more challenging then for the board, because you have less.
And then where, where are or are not the voucher students in this? Are they anywhere in these counts, or are they part of the disappearance?
They're not in the membership count, and certainly, they're not in his.
Okay, so part of it could. I don't know, part of the, the few hundred kids could be partly due to vouchers, correct?
Sure.
Yeah.
I think the last time they reported it, there was a high percentage that had previously been in that school, and we had never counted them to begin with.
That's right.
And we don't have accurate figures on exactly what that number might be.
And all private schools, children do not show up in either your count or your count?
That's correct.
Correct?
Okay, so what, the first sheet is our elementary schools. What I'm showing is the present enrollment. You can see there's a few, a few schools. Red is overcapacity, black in brackets is undercapacity. So, Aldo is overcapacity, but I have to explain to you that it's not over building capacity, it's over the program capacity. Aldo's a choice school. When the program was set up, it was set up to have fifty students per grade level, a total of four hundred and fifty for kindergarten through eighth grade. So three hundred at the elementary and a hundred and fifty at the middle school. So that was how the program had, the building actually could, is, is, is a larger building than when they started. They've, they've kind of grown from building to building, starting, you know, from Howe and Al, the old Alway School and to the, you know, to the present school. So they've gotten larger buildings. So the, even though the building can handle it, the program capacity was, at one point, sat there. They've kind of relu, reduced their requirements as far as holding to that capacity and have allowed more students into the program. So that's why we're showing that it's overcapacity, but it's over the, the program capacity, it's not really over the building capacity. The same thing's pretty much the same for Da Vinci. We had designated cer, certain number of students for each grade level, and because of the popularity of that program and the request for it, they've allowed that program capacity to be exceeded. So those, again, are both choice schools, so that's kind of, you know, a little bit different than our, our other schools, which are all designated on building capacity. And you can see there's, on, on the present year, there's several schools that are overcapacity, you know, Bear, Dan's, Eisenhower, for example. The gray numbers in the next line are, are new capacities after we complete the referendum projects that are taking place at this point. So as those schools that all have gray on, and the east side on the top chart and the west side are on the, the lower chart, you'll see that when those referendums are completed this year and next year, that takes care of a lot of our overcapacity at those schools. So after our completion of our referendum projects, we should be under building capacity at all of our elementary schools. Now, what you'll see there, this will also give us some opportunity in some of those schools, as Michelle said earlier, is, you know, do we look at, you know, doing something with those schools that are way under capacity to make them more efficient? And, you know, or, and, and pro, on schools that have very low enrollment, be able to do something with those schools to give those students more opportunities and choice. So you'll see, especially on our west side of school, we have, you know, we have several schools that, you know, are quite a bit over, undercapacity, you know, Fort Howard, Keller has always been undercapacity, Kennedy, there's a lot of space. You know, we have, we also have some very small schools that we should look at because of other schools that are close by that are undercapacity, you know, Jackson, I'm sorry, Jefferson is a very small school. And, you know, we have Wickway Oak in the far, that's also a very small school. So I think by looking at some of our schools that are neighboring schools or in this close proximity, we do have some opportunities to try to make those buildings more efficient and give the students more opportunities by, you know, doing some, maybe some consolidation or some boundary changes and shifting some students. So, that's at the elementary level. The second sheet is our middle schools, and you'll see a, a very similar with that, too. Again, Aldo is showing to be over, overcapacity, and again, that's building capacity. The only school at this point, you know, that, that were a little bit overcapacity is Edison. Edison, again, through the referendum, will be getting some additional classrooms where the old cafeteria is, and that'll be increasing the capacity of that building. And along with declining enrollment that's projected, we should be okay and be undercapacity at Edison. Katie.
Is that okay to ask questions now?
Yes.
Okay. If you were to give me, if I'm understanding you correctly, Aldo and Da Vinci can both accommodate more students than their current capacities.
The building can, correct.
The building can. So these are self-imposed capacities by the programs?
Correct.
Could you, and you don't have to give me the answer now, but if, could I, I'd like you to hazard a guess and give me what the building capacities would be for each of those.
Sure, we can figure those out.
Buildings. Cause I think it's, you know, if there's space, I think it should be used.
Sure. And that, and I, that's what they've been doing is, you know, at Aldo where they know that they have the space to handle, they've kind of rela, re, relaxed the program capacity and allowed more students to come into that program.
Okay, so then if they're, and if that reflects, if the true building capacity is closer to the enrollment, then it's less of a.
Right. And they, and they can, you know, when they get to where they're starting to run out of space, they can, again, they, because if it's a choice school, they can just start.
Right, but it would be a truer capa, imposing a truer capacity.
Correct.
Limit.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then the third sheet is our high schools. And, you know, as, you know, we, we have a lot of capacity, especially on our west side. You can see it, you know, Southwest and West, out, you know, just go out for five years, you know, we have a four hundred capacity, undercapacity at Southwest, and, you know, three hundred and thirty capacity, undercapacity at West, so we have some space there. We've been looking at about two hundred overcapacity at Preble. And again, with our decline in enrollment that we've seen, we don't, aren't projecting that that would grow much past what it is now, and we could even have a decline in enrollment. Now, the one variable in this, again, is that we have a lot of potential growth that could take place on our east side. There's developments that have been scheduled. We've been following those for several years now. However, none of those developments really have taken off and have, have really affected our enrollment as of yet. So we're, you know, we're continuing to monitor those, and, you know, those could, at some point, you know, change some of these projections, if that would take place.
I remember though, I was surprised at the boundary committee meeting, I think I was at that particular meeting when they talked about the fact that, or no, I wasn't at the meeting, but they, they had the planning from, information from Bellevue and also from, from Green Bay, and not all of the development is going to be family homes. And that was part of why the boundary committee didn't think the growth was going to be enough to warrant building at least a high school on that side of town. And I assume that's something that we'll continue to follow in terms of what the actual planning is for the building.
Correct. There, you know, there's been a, a large development that's just south of our, our high school site, be to, on, on Erie Road by Grandview, which is just north of Frebel. And we've been monitoring that for several years. They did have a development going there, but it was, ended up being a, a large senior housing development, or else, I guess it's not really senior, it's more of a assisted living that's in there now. So it's supposed to be a mixed use of starter homes, apartments, and retirement. So, again, you know, I, I haven't been out there for a couple of weeks now, but the last time I went out there this fall, they haven't even started putting roads now, yet. So, I'm not sure how long it would be before they're actually gonna proceed with that development. I did talk to one of the civil engineers that had worked on some of our projects this summer, and that's also working with the developer, and they just indicated that it's just been moving along very slow.
And then can you explain for, I think probably Laura and Christina's benefit, the percentage usage and what the ideal percent usage is for a high school?
Yes, sure. So, when we look at capacity, you know, even though we're two hundred students overcapacity at Preble, you know, kids are still in classrooms, they're not sitting in hallways, they're, and high schools are sched, are, are, capacity at high schools is, is different than at a elementary or middle school. Elementary, it's, it's really simple. You look at the number of classrooms that are used as a, as a standard first, second, third grade, the number of students that are in there, you know, if it's, it's a standard classroom, standard school, we use twenty-five, it's AGR, you know, it's, could be about eighteen. And you can just count up and figure out how many rooms that need to be for special ed and music, art, those, and then you can fairly easy count and determine the capacity. I had done capacity several years ago, and then we had, when we did our facility study, we brought in B R A, we compared and the capacities, you know, have shifted a little bit, but they were pretty much the same as our capacity, and we, we updated those, I think it was two years ago. When we get to the high schools, capacity is done on a percentage of room usage. So, when you look at a high school, for instance, and we'll just use Preble as an example, you can't schedule every room for every period a hundred percent of the time because of scheduling difficulties. First of all, if you look at lunch period, a third of your students are on lunch. And every built, you know, in an elementary, a first grade classroom is used all day long, except for when the kids are at specials. But at a high school, because of student, the way students move around and lunch periods and the difficulty of scheduling it, the national recommendation is to schedule the room usage between eighty percent at the low side and ninety percent at the high side. Back in two thousand nine, we had an enrollment management task force, and we presented those figures to the enrollment management task force. And they decided, instead of using the eighty or ninety percent, cause ninety is the tops and the eighty is like the lowest, they would use eighty-five percent. So that's been kind of the district's practice. So when we look at a, a school like Preble that's, you know, overcapacity, what that means is those classrooms are being scheduled more than eighty-five percent of the time. There might be some classrooms that are scheduled a hundred percent all day long, when others might be only scheduled for, you know, four or, or six periods of the day. So that's how they get by. There's also rooms at Preble that were not designed as standard classrooms. There were some resource rooms, those types of rooms, and those have now been converted to classrooms. So by using a higher percentage of room usage and using some non-classroom spaces at classrooms, that's how Preble has been dealing with their overcrowding. We have also talked that there's students that do not spend their entire day at school. There's students that go and have work-study, they have other activities that do not take place at Preble, and so it doesn't mean that if there's, you know, twenty-one hundred students that there's twenty-one hundred students there every day. Some of those students are taking, you know, classwork off of, off, out of the school.
Do you have other stuff? We'll take questions otherwise.
No.
Any other questions for Mr. Stengel?
Yeah, I guess I have. I still, I've never really completely understood about this eighty-five percent room utilization. Well, I wanna be very clear that I'm not asking this question because I advocate putting more kids into Preble because I get that Preble is too full, regardless of what numbers and ratios we're using, it is, it is too full. So, I, I understand that at one time, maybe the fifteen percent that room two oh one wasn't in use was because that was Mr. Becker's prep period and two oh one was Becker's room. But since, at least in Preble and to some extent, other places, we've moved away from, you know, Becker having a room and Warren having a room, what, what is optimal to do with the room, then? What is it, what is it supposed to be used for, so to speak, during that other fifteen percent?
Well, first of all, I have to say that I've not a scheduler and I'm not in high school, so I'm kind of going off of what, you know, I've been informed. But, you know, it's my understanding, and Renee probably could answer this much better than I am because she's lived it. So.
The, the main use for rooms when it is, sorry, main use for, for classrooms when it is not used for content areas has been for study halls or for using rooms that were not designed for their attention. So for instance, if it turns out that when we're scheduling, our main goal is to get at least ninety percent of the students scheduled for what they want, and it could be one year, a majority of kids want this class over this class and so on. So we have had to had, and we, and they still do, math classes in a classroom that was not designed for a math classroom. We've had to have science classrooms in classrooms that were not designed to be science. So, first of all, we try to get them into classrooms in which those rooms were designed. So you want social studies in rooms where there's going to be maps or whatever materials that are in there. You're gonna want language arts classrooms where there are resource libraries with the novels and so on. And you're gonna want math classrooms that have grids and different technology that, that they need for the classroom. So when they're not used, and you were right, they're not used for that subject area, we'll find another re, using, reason for them, so that when they can get up to ninety-four percent, there are not many classrooms that are, are empty at Preble.
So, but one, wouldn't a room be counted in use if study hall was booked in it during a period?
It could be. I would think so.
Potentially, study hall. I also sometimes, when you talk about room usage and scheduling, sometimes people get used to having a room that would be open during their preps, for example. And if we have full capacity, that sometimes can involve, you know, a, a, maybe a traveling teacher who would like to have that room open for the rest of the day. teacher who would like to have that room open for the rest of the day and still have it be their room, that it's shared by multiple people, or that sometimes the prep of the teacher isn't necessarily owned within that classroom. Not to say that that can't be done, but it does impact things sometimes when you have to leave during your prep because a class is being taught there or you can't bring people in for a meeting. I'm not saying that's always the case, but that can be an impact too of a very full schedule.
Okay, so it'd be, it's not so much that the room, there'd probably be, in a place like Preble, probably almost never would a room be, once in a while, probably very rarely be locked and empty with the lights out, but maybe an informal meeting or IEP meetings in there because it's open and it's not too crowded, or some of these, or an informal math lab has developed in fourth hour lunch or whatever. Okay. Okay.
Other questions, folks? We're gonna, we're gonna wrap up this, we're gonna come back to Mike on urgent needs and current reality, but anything else on enrollment and capacity before we move on? Okay, with that, let's transition to urgent needs and current reality. Mike?
Okay, so for next year, we have a couple urgent needs that we need to come up with a plan for. The first one is the Northeast Wisconsin School of Intervention, Innovation. That is a charter school that will be opening up in the fall of 2019. When the school is fully, in the process, it'll accommodate around 300 students. Next year, they're gonna be opening up with approximately 100 students, and then it'll grow from there. That does not include, I'm sorry, 150 students, that does not include the 100 students that are in the academy that are presently located at East High School. Eventually, those students would join the school. So we're looking at a place to open up the school, either permanent location or a temporary location, and then give us time to find a permanent home for the school that will meet its needs. The other one is John Dewey Academy for Learning. Presently, they're located in rental space at St. Peter and Paul Church. Our lease is up at the end of June, and we'll be looking for a new space for them. Presently, there's about 30 students that are there on a full-time basis, attend all day long, and then there's approximately another 30 students that are a part-time, and some of their work is done online. Their charter is written for a total enrollment of about 120 students. And then the other one, which we don't know yet, but we have a good feeling for, is the grant that Sally Jansen has written for West Side Head Start School. That would be to increase our 4K to an all-day program. Her Head Start, right now, except for at the new Head Start building on Bellevue, is a half-day program. So this would include a Head Start for all day. And the anticipated enrollment there would be 169 students. And we're looking at a temporary location as a starter at Keller School for next year. But then as that school would roll out, we would be looking for more of a permanent location. So those are the three programs that we have urgent needs for and that we need to find locations for next year.
Questions for Mike?
Sorry to throw in two more cents on Preble. The premise that Preble is over full, or over capacity or had too many kids, was something we looked at pretty seriously during the Secondary Committee, and you were there as well. There were a number of things that were noted as positives as well because of the scale of economy at Preble, students being able to take a much wider range of AP and advanced courses. That was something that if the size were to shrink, that it would possibly impact that. Also, that there wasn't a lot of, a lot of critical data that indicated that the size was causing an issue. Like if we looked at, maybe the hallways are too overcrowded and they're actually unsafe or detract from the sense of community. That was something that we heard from the administration and the kids, that it didn't, that didn't seem to be the issue. Now, again, I'm not saying that it isn't oversized, but I would, if we were making a decision based, in any part of this, based on Preble being oversized, I think taking a little further look at that, we had some different options as far as change in schedule that were put out there, but they weren't really deeply embraced. So again, I'm not saying that it's not an issue, but I would want to, especially since the enrollment has decreased some since that point, that we look at what is that impact if that is a driver in our decision-making at some point.
The other thing we've kind of heard through the task force is, and through, I think, some of the other meetings that we had, is that it seemed like the parents were, had more of a vision of Preble being overcrowding than the students. A lot of the students we talked to didn't feel that there was a crowding issue, as they felt that, they didn't see it as much as I should say the parents did.
Questions?
It's full.
Very full.
Renee would tell you it's full.
I just want to add one more thing, is a lot of the parents don't know the creativity that went into the scheduling there. So for instance, every year, Preble has requested permission from DPI to allow students to only go there for six periods and not have a lunch and not have a study hall. So if they see that there's room in some classrooms, it could be because in other schools, you have to be there all day, and at Preble, you only have to be there, you can be there. And in past years, we did a zero hour, so students went zero through five, or one through six, or two through seven, or three through eight. So that was just one way. And it's also interesting because since I've been hired in the district in 2002, every year, all I was pretty much asked to do is find another way that we can squish kids in there more. And the kids have done a nice job, but it is a very complicated task to try to find the appropriate rooms for everybody. And thank goodness, Preble has two teacher workrooms where they're in little cubicles so that we can not, teachers don't get their own classrooms because of that reason. So I think that we have done a very nice job making it feel like they're not squished in there, but we have done that for years.
Other questions for Mike? So folks, we're right on time, we're right where we want to be, and we're going to get into our discussion now. And folks, I'm gonna have a series of questions for you that I'm gonna ask you to consider and maybe think about and then reflect on. And as you report out, we're gonna ask Lori to take notes. The reason for that is that if I was writing, there'd be no way that we would be able to read my writing, but we will if Lori is doing it. And so it's important to note that we're not deciding on specific items. Again, we're talking about the parameters for those future decisions, okay? So we're gonna jump in with New Innovation and JADAL. And Mike, I think we'll go back to you, am I right, to talk through some of the options?
Join in the conversation. Okay, so we've been looking around, as I said earlier, you know, our two urgent needs right now are NEW School and JADAL. So we've been looking at different options, and I just want to start off by saying, none of these options have, we don't have them in an order. We, the administration has a lot more work to look at these options, but we're gonna just put them out there and some of the pros and cons that we've seen with these different options. But at this point, there's a lot more work that needs to be completed and investigated in all of these options. For, so for NEW, our option one, and we're just calling them option one because of, again, these buildings that we've looked at, we don't know if they're even gonna be able to be available to us. Or, we know they're gonna be able to be available for us, but we don't know if, we haven't done enough study on the program to make sure that they're at the adequate space for these programs. So option one, we did look at a building, Andrew's very familiar with it, at 701 Cherry Street. It was formerly the Job Service Building. When we looked at it, the building right now is for lease or for sale. So it's a vacant building that we could look at possibly leasing and using that building as, for NEW, we'll also look at it as JADAL. Some of the pros is that as a temporary solution, we could, since the building is vacant now and with some minor renovations, we could occupy it as a temporary site by September. It is centrally located in the district. I'm not gonna go through all these, but it would be about 15 minutes to go out to UWGB if the students need to get to there, or approximately about the same amount of time to get out to NWTC. You know, there is, you know, cons along with every, you know, pro. It's not, you know, with the students that are gonna be doing a lot of classwork at NWTC, it would be a ways there and they would have to be transported out there. It's an office building, so there's no cafeteria or gymnasium, so something would have to be done to accommodate those needs. And if it's a long-term solution, the building would have to be further renovated, possibly added to depending on the growth of the program. Option two, we've been working with NWTC, and there's a building that they own that's just at the edge of their campus. We looked at the possibility of renovating that building and moving the program out there. There's some pluses and minuses there too, as you can see. You know, some of the pluses is that it'd be very easy for students to go between the school and NWTC for other coursework. The building is, you know, fairly large, and there's a, you know, possibly to do some extensive renovation into, you know, the type of spaces that they need. On the other hand, the negative is that it would need extensive renovation. Again, we would have to work with NWTC to determine ownership and lease opportunities, those types of things. Option three would be Frabel. Next year, as we complete our renovations for Baird, those 4K and 5K students would go back to Baird. The students that we'd have left there would be Martin students, and there is opportunity to move those to another school if need be for next year. So we could vacate Frabel. The nice thing about it is for a starter, it would need minimum renovation. We've toured the building, and it would meet their needs for, as a temporary solution. If it would become a permanent solution, the building would have to be expanded to meet those needs. The disadvantage, I think that we're all aware of, is it's way on the far east side of the school district. There is not a bus route there. Students would have to be transported out there and would also have to be transported to NWTC or UWGB, which would be across town. So the location is probably the biggest con of it right now.
And we own that building.
And we own the building.
The other two options we don't own. So then when you talk about more information needed, it really goes back to cost, and I know Mr. Kasha and I have had that conversation. What does it cost?
Right.
So especially if we're looking temporary versus permanent. Just put that out there for, as you get into discussion.
And then on the fourth option, as we looked at, is, you know, could we locate one of those programs in this building by consolidate some of our central office needs and free up some space here? Again, we own the building. They would, it would be a temporary solution because, again, the space would be small as the program would grow. You know, other positive is that it is centrally located, again, not too far from bus routes. So it'd be easy bus to get to other locations. And then we had very similar options and pros, pros and cons for JADAL. Again, option one, looking at the building at 701 Cherry Street. You know, some of the positives that they liked about being in the same school as NEW schools that could share some of the resources, and some of the spaces could be shared. Again, we could look at as a temporary solution, having them there for September. But again, if it was a long-term solution, something else would have to be done to the building.
So are you gonna speak more specifically? Because I think one of the, one of the conversations that we've been having is really the, by having separate identities but within, under the same roof, you could really co-locate some of the shared resources, but also some of the programming. You know, you might have one maker space that they could share, things like that. So that's been part of the important discussion when you talk about being able to leverage, you know, school psychologists, social workers, and community partners and things. So I just put that out there, because I, that's an important pro that a lot of people who had their eyes on this, particularly people directly involved, brought that to our attention.
Dr. Lingfield, it's your time.
Please.
And I'll let Renee jump in here as well. Something we've been hearing from the staff and students at JADAL is concern over social, emotional services and learning. We do not have a full-time social worker, psychologist, or counselor working in that facility at this time. We see this as an opportunity, one of the many opportunities, if the two were in the same location, to share and potentially enhance those offerings. In addition, the collaboration under the leadership of Renee, as she oversees the charter schools, that I've been able to watch between Jason Johnson, the leader for New Innovation, and Jen Agamide from JADAL, it's been thrilling to watch their collaboration and their excitement about the potential of working together while still maintaining their individual identity as a charter school, because they're very different programs. But we believe there's a unique opportunity here. If you look on the final page where it says one of the cons, JADAL parents and students would prefer their own school, I would offer that, we haven't had the opportunity to explain to them, as we have to Jen and the staff, the great potential here. And I personally feel that when we get that opportunity, if that's a direction we want to move forward in, that they will see the great potential there. And I'll ask Renee if she has any other input.
What has been interesting with this collaboration is, one of the things that I've tried to do is also say, let's bring them together if we can, but keep them totally separate. And as the two are working together, they're realizing that maybe they don't want to be as separate even as they had thought. And part of it is, is, you know, and it also includes looking at, you know, the one area that's really growing is the need for alternative education. And they were talking not only about keeping the program separate, but what if there's some, some students who are at NEW who really realize that they're project-based, but maybe not for every subject? And maybe they want to be able to collaborate that way. And there's some project-based students that maybe want to get out to NWTC with an NEW, and it doesn't really fit in with what they're doing. And this way, then we can cater to a lot more needs than just the social-emotional need. There might be some academic needs in certain content areas that one program doesn't specialize that the other one does. And the more they continue talking, the more they're very excited about where they can go for these students and to really individualize. So that has been part of the excitement here, is we keep changing and we keep thinking what is gonna be best for the students. And so we want to, we want to be able to be at a place where we can be a part, but yet we can through the but yet, we can, through the students' eyes, see how much do we really wanna be together? And so, that's been very exciting.
Yeah, I love what you're saying, because what I was thinking too is like, what do they need in terms of space to fit the model of education that they are trying to achieve, right? So, do they, you know, like, the first one, option one, there's no cafeteria and no gym. Well, if the vision is that they're gonna do cooking classes and hands-on stuff, well, then that option number one is not gonna fit for them. So-
At least for year one.
Yeah, but yes, yeah. But I'm just saying, it would be helpful for me to look at this if I was like, this is what they need, right?
Sheldon, we're gonna come back to that in just a second.
Is there anything to wrap up? Because I can see people wanting to jump in, which is great.
Yeah, and just to finish off, I mean, we had the other two options for J-Doll are very similar to NEW, where they could either come to this building or to Frabel would work for them also. But we have to keep in mind that it's not big enough for both programs. So, if we would use Frabel for one program, we could not use it for the other one, and the same thing with this building.
Is it big enough for the first year?
Because-
Not together.
NEW is 150, oh, it's still not even with the-
Yeah, I mean, if we would, if we would, for instance, use Frabel for J-Doll or NEW, we would have to find a different location for the other program.
Then the 701 Cherry could temporarily fit the new charter school, well, but not permanently.
Correct.
Okay, so one, it would be a first-year solution for the charter school, looking towards other permanent space.
Except this doesn't-
Or adding on.
We would have to do something to the building to make it permanent. Same thing as, you know-
But I mean, would you have to add square footage?
Yes.
Yes, and there's room to-
Right.
Okay.
Right, and the same thing with, I mean, if we would decide that, for instance, Frabel would be the permanent home for NEW, it would be okay for the first year. If we decide that that's gonna be permanent, we would have to add on to that building also.
In a moment, folks, I'm gonna ask for your thoughts. Any clarifying questions that you have about what you're seeing here and what staff presented? Okay, so, here's what we're going to do. I'm gonna ask a question, I'm gonna let you think about it for half a minute, minute, and then we're gonna have a conversation, okay? And as we're doing that, Lori's going to jot down your thoughts. Here's what I'd ask you to consider. Based on the options that were just provided, what are your reactions to the options? And what guidance do you want to provide administration when they make their recommendations? So, again, we're looking for feedback, kind of general feedback. And then, we're asking for what guidance can you provide administration while they're making their recommendations? Let's allow you to kind of think and reflect for a few seconds, and we'll come back and we'll let you talk, okay? Who wants to start? Yes?
And it's kind of a minor clarifying question as well. I guess I'm trying to decide, if you had to pick the optimum site for the programs, would it be the site that's closest to NWTC?
Or the site that's closer to the high schools, because that's, I'm going to the same-
Right, I mean, is the proximity to TC and the opportunity there, albeit you'd have to wait a year, I'm trying to decide if I'm looking in a temporary mindset for the first year, or then to buy some time to get to the best place? Or if I need to think about these temporary places becoming permanent places and how that would look. Before she answers that, I, just to clarify, Mike, I wanna clarify for the board as well. There is an opportunity to lease for a year, and then you'd be out of sight. That's my wonderment, is, I'm not sure we know. I'm gonna just put that out there. But the opportunity to lease the spot closest to NWTC is not- That's not an option. That's not an option, but the other place, I understand, I think that's why, I would have to decide if I'm getting into lease mode or buy mode and get wedded to a location. I don't wanna get wedded to a location if you're all gonna tell me that the best spot is the one that we can't get into for another year.
Is that a question that you can answer? The lease versus buy, the temporary versus permanent, I think is important, and I saw some heads nodding here. Is that a question that you can answer?
I can answer, but it's gonna be an ambiguous answer, because it's, and it's an intriguing problem. We today had a great conversation with NWTC on how that's gonna look and how, how much time our students are gonna spend on their campus. And then, they were also asking, well, can we have people come over to your campus and so on? I think we need a year to kind of develop that partnership with NWTC to figure out. If I knew for sure we were gonna be spending all our time on that campus, we definitely wanna be closer. But now, they were bringing up other ideas that they wanna explore too. And I also think we need to find out, how are our kids doing in that as they go there and they have people come here? And so, I think we need a year to figure that one out.
Well, I know you need to, you need to be somewhere a year, because we don't have a place to be.
No, but, but when you ask, you know, would we rather be in the central location of the city or there, I don't think we all, any of us can answer that question until we kind of see how things going. So, that has been very difficult for us.
So, with that in mind, can we then put minimal amount of money into the leased space if that's-
To make it usable for a year?
To make it usable for a year without, while we decide? I mean, you're literally saying we could potentially lease that space, see how things go location-wise, and then decide about a purchase, you know, and decide on location. But I don't wanna put, you know, $600,000 into a building that we're only gonna be in for a year. So, is that building usable with minimal renovation?
Well, I mean, I would have to rely on the users of it. I believe there's some opportunity there. Now, if we would lease the building, we would not put money into the building. We, the owner of the building would, you know, make the improvements. Again, I don't, then we would have to determine the length of the lease also, depending on- Please.
One of the things that, as I've gone out, and this is my own research, but also thinking, is that, and I've wrestled with this problem in my head, knowing that we don't know what we don't know. Much of the resource, I think about John Dewey, for example. If the space is there, there's ways to do some temporary situations. A lot of it is furniture. A lot of it is, you know, different furniture and different, that's what I see in terms of flexible space. It's using modern, contemporary kinds of innovative furniture and spaces, you know, that you could move with you. That's why I started looking and thinking about it. Mike and I actually had a pretty in-depth conversation about that for the very reason. Because how much is really furniture and, you know, that you could, you could move with you? And, you know, I mean, I look at where we've had some pretty traditional spaces that look very forward-thinking and modern because of what we put in the room as opposed to the box around us. So, that, and we haven't had that conversation, but we went there to think about if you could do a lot of flexible kinds of things that you could take with you, you know, even base around the different career, the career modules or whatever that looks like. There are some things you could do, we talked about that, so. Because that's a follow-up question of it.
Your conversation with the people at NWTC and their interest in the back-and-forth thing, do you think you could broach the subject for the year that we test out the downtown site or the more central-city site of providing some kind of a shuttle service for our students and their students to go back and forth, just to facilitate that?
I think they're open to anything. And then, also I wanted to add on is, one of the things that the J-Doll staff and the very limited NEW staff did is when they looked at the Job Center, is they were told by people there that, you know, what could be knocked down or whatever. But they went into it thinking, what could we utilize without knocking things down? And they were already doing that, which didn't work out at some of the other spots. But here would be where we would do some big group work, and here's where we would do this, and here's where we would do this. So, when you ask, I think Brenda had asked, with minimal renovation, that one has been a site that they're already thinking where they could do, what they need to do. And they're also very excited about asking, because in particular, there's one student who, his project happens to deal with architecture. What could you suggest for us that maybe we're older, maybe we're missing something, that you could suggest that we could utilize this space? So, that's fun too.
One of my thoughts is, is that since there has been so much collaboration with the two schools, that I would be inclined to not separate them the first year. So, I know some, a couple of these, one or two of these options require them to be on separate locations. So, that would be my thought.
Just to clarify, I think on the table right now, we have what Dr. Warren just mentioned, the idea of keeping the two schools together, but also, I think, looking at a short-term situation, right? Other board members? Other thoughts?
I agree, I think that sounds like a great idea, and very intriguing.
Miss Becker?
Yeah, I think the, it seems, it seems to make pretty, pretty good sense for the first year. But I was a little bit confused about where they say, so a pro for option one was, you know, we talked about sharing the, sharing certain resources and things, which is, is great. But then, almost immediately said, but it won't be big enough for both schools. So, is that, is the understanding then that if, going forward, if we were gonna have some shared resources, then we would have to do it by adding on, but could accommodate it by adding on?
Correct.
Obviously, if we split after the first year, because it's a temporary solution, then the shared resources doesn't work anymore. One, my biggest concern, and I've said this for a long time, I think, about the, about J-Dell, more specifically, J-Dell, a program with families and kids in it, as opposed to the one that doesn't have families and kids in it yet. I would want to see, I know nothing will be unanimous, but I would wanna see substantial, substantial faculty and student and family buy-in to whatever option is chosen. It's, I think, I can see the advantages of that space, which is, I actually, I actually had a role in emptying out the space. So, I know that would work like really well for a Dewey, and really poorly for, and for, say, trying to put 4K in there. But for a Dewey with flexible spaces, it probably works pretty well. But I know what people went through when they thought last year, or thought at referendum time, that an option had been chosen for them that probably would have taken away its identity. There are people who, there are families who choose, and students who choose Dewey because of primarily project-based, and they would like it just as well if it was a 1,000-student project-based school or a 100-person project-based school. But there are families who choose Dewey because it's a, it's a school of less than 100 kids, and project-based is, is nice, but they, if it wasn't project-based, they might have chosen anyways for, for that reason. But the concern about, let's put it in a high school where there's space, I think is vastly different than this new space, which does separate pretty well, so. But if the, I guess my amount of liking 701 Cherry pretty much goes away if there isn't buy-in by families.
Needs to be buy-in, buy-in before anything is done. Sheldon, you were, you were nodding your head, do you wanna weigh in on that?
Christina?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Christina.
Oh, Christina, okay. Sheldon.
Oh, Ms. Sheldon, I thought you were calling her Ms. Sheldon.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Ms. Sheldon, Ms. Sheldon, sorry.
I don't really have anything to add. I think what Andrew said so well is exactly what I was thinking too. I think we have to really make sure we're meeting the needs of our families and our students, for whether it be from transportation or physical space. But we want to make sure that when they show up, that they are excited to be there, and that it's, you know, you're not gonna please everyone, but we want that transition to be really positive.
Yes, Dr. Langenfeld.
Would the, would the board be amenable, and I've had this conversation with Dr. Rafin at NWTC, to, to have maybe a couple of classrooms at NWTC? That was another discussion. We haven't discussed that, but as we think about making sure we can accommodate the space, not even sure that we need it, that was another thing, is that, you know- In addition to? In addition to. It would be in addition to.
Okay.
That if there was a circumstance that we were really tight till we made, and maybe permanently, I don't know. I just wanna make-
Well, I see as a temporary.
A temporary, if we knew that they needed addition on and build on, is that something that, you know-
Were you offering classrooms?
Yeah, we talked, I asked him about it, if it's even a possibility, because I knew that we wouldn't get to any construction if that became the permanent place. And I thought, well, I'm just gonna ask.
And then the buses to get to the classrooms, I like it.
What kind of financial arrangement would that require then?
I think that's why I'm asking if the board would, if you'd like us to look at that.
Because we haven't even gotten that far. Would that be helpful in your endeavors?
Because, and we haven't, the team hasn't talked about it. It's just, it triggered it when it said we didn't have enough space the first year. I did ask him.
Well, there's enough space in option one, the first year, correct? For both programs?
No, they could both fit in there.
For one year.
For one year, okay.
Board members-
Then you have to add or move.
And then, you have to add or move, yeah.
Board members, any concerns about making the ask that Dr. Langenfeld suggests?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
No, no, no concerns about the ask, yeah.
Depends what the answer is, but I mean, it's-
Well, we can get the information. I won't pursue it if it wouldn't be an option, so.
I have a question, and I might have missed this, and I apologize if I did. So, I understand we've been talking about the NWTC connection. Is there a UWGB connection too? Can you speak a little bit about that and how that is part of this discussion?
We're farther along with NWTC than we are UWGB, so I would not be able to give enough information on that one.
But the location to UWGB is also, needs to be a consideration then, because you're saying that we would, we would have-
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and then there's also the express bus that would, could take them to, but it has to be on a bus line to be able to tap into that.
Which the Job Center is just a block off of that bus line.
Right, 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 okay.
The only one that's not was Frabel.
Correct, and our options?
Although, Frabel is close, and they do a little deviation for Edison on one of the lines that gets pretty close to Frabel. We could potentially negotiate something, or probably not.
Jeremy was looking into that for us, but we don't have the answer yet.
I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure we could get, for some amount of compensation, I'm sure the answer would become yes, but would it be a reasonable one?
Right.
So, it's not that far, half a mile? Right, it's not a huge distance, because the 15 and 16 go up to, up to Huron Road. So, that wouldn't be a huge little extension to do two times a day, so it's possible.
It would be more to catch the express bus.
That goes every half hour, correct, from UW, Green Bay, NWTC?
Just-
I think it is 30 minutes.
So, that, if we were to be able to tap into that, then that would be a half an hour away from a bus stop for that? Or half a mile, sorry.
Dr. Langenfeld, were you going to add something a minute ago?
No, I'm listening and wanting to make sure in my head we have all the questions down, so we know where to pursue them, so.
Again, specific, specific recommendations.
I think that would be, you know, looking at the time. I think my question would be, is there anything that we should not further explore that's on that page? So that we can cross those off and then focus on other things.
Anything we wanna just take off, out of consideration?
What was the second currently owned place?
The option four?
Frabel.
No.
No, that's right, that's right.
That's fourth option, DOB.
No one seems very excited about that.
Is that even real, is that, is that just like, is that just like saying, if you really need us to take one for the team, we'll take one for the team, but it's not really great?
No, we, we looked at the space. You know, there's some advantages of having it centrally located. Again, it's not very far from the bus.
How about parking? Parking is really hard.
Well, the, again, it's for the first year.
Yeah.
And they're starting off with seventh, eighth, and ninth graders, is that correct? So, so it'd be additional, some additional staff. And we, you know, we have the parking lot that's south of, a couple of joy by the church over there. So we're not looking at a lot of additional parking requirements.
Okay. So you're looking at that as a temporary?
As a temporary, correct.
Because it says permanent or temporary, but you're...
Well, if it was a permanent, then we would have to look at moving the district office to another location, or, I mean, when we look at it, we, we had looked at, you know, we have other space available within the district. And that was the total idea of looking at the, the overall capacities of our schools. And we have schools that are, you know, under capacity. Could they be right-sized to what they should be? And then do we have opportunities to use those schools as other purposes?
How did that appeals to me, just for the idea of kind of decentralizing? And getting people from down here into schools?
So, so again, folks, I'm going to push a little bit, just because we've got some other things to cover. Following up on what Laurie suggested, is there anything that we want to take off, take out of consideration? Anything here that you just hate, that you, that, say, I hate that option?
I think only four. I think it disrupts too much. We can, there's other ways to accomplish moving administrators out into buildings. We could just tell administrators, go out in the buildings more, and then you can, you have to go in the buildings more and may pay for whatever we have to pay for, office space, whatever. But I don't think we, right, if, if that's desired, we don't need a external force to make it happen. We can just say, and I know it is happening more, but we can just say, okay, double, double that or triple that, without having to put a school in here for a year, and then, it seems like it disrupts, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like a, a very heavy disruption for something that likely would not be permanent.
I would concur with that.
I'm sorry, and that's option four, correct?
Four, the, four is DOB, right?
Yeah. Four, with the temporary solution for either J-Doll or NEW, we're looking at space that could be made available in this building without moving a lot of people. If we would look at this building as a permanent location, that would require us to move people out.
Just seems like we have better options, so maybe we can just not pursue that and use that time.
Except more expensive. I mean, DOB wouldn't cost us anything to use for a year, correct? Other than furniture and...
Yeah, we would have some...
There'd be some renovation.
Some renovation, some minor renovation, and we'd also, you know, have to move some resources that are in this location to another place, so there'd be some minor costs.
Even for the temporary? Yeah, okay.
Quick question, Mike. The DOB couldn't house both programs, or both schools, correct? Just one?
Only if it was a, a whole building.
And that goes back to what?
Right, and then we'd have to move the district office to another location.
So for the first year, they could be together?
No.
No, so, so if the priority is together, and/or if the priority is, I'm hearing from, from the board, that, that the disruption is an important variable to consider as well, then, then the DOB is not an option. If those are two important variables that we should prioritize.
Yeah, I think I...
Is that fair?
I think I made the point, or I think I said it, but if we would use either Frabel or the district office as a temporary location for NEW, or, or they would have to be at separate sites.
See, and that being said, and what Renee has said about the enthusiasm that's growing to work together, I'd be inclined, if you want to test the waters, then test the waters at the central location of the Job Center. And if it works, great. And then if they decide that they'd rather be closer to NWTC, then pursue that. If we can get a rent-to-own option on the Job Center, as a possible, I don't know. I just think, if you wanted, if, just watching Jen and Jason talking to one another about, you know, what they could do together, or what they could do apart, there's a lot of enthusiasm there. And I think if you present it as a way to test the waters together, and then if it doesn't work, then it's a one-year commitment, and you go on from there.
I also like the idea of sharing resources.
I do, too.
So again, can we pull, can we pull option four?
Yes.
Everybody's good with that? Okay, all right.
We have three.
I pulled three.
And three, too? Three and four. Any objection to that, folks? What else?
Well, if we pull, you're talking about pulling three for the first year, well, we, we own it anyways, right? We own three, so they're pulling three for next year, doesn't have anything to do with...
No, because if, if together doesn't work out, we have three as an option.
So we're not taking off the table, one at Cherry and one at Frabel, two years down the road? We would just be taking it off for 1920? I'm okay with that.
Anything else before we move on, folks? Yes?
Just, and so then, when we come back, we will need to have a proposal with money attached to them, so the board can clearly see what this would cost.
Right.
And I would assume it's more than just the rental space that you would want to see, but as well with, you know, facilities, any of those additional pieces. We need to probably bring forward what some renovation would cost. I would think the whole package. All right, just wanted to make sure I'm clear. Thanks.
Did we just by default decide that next year is both, both programs in Cherry, though? Because of one of them not being available at all next fall?
Yeah, that's what we decided.
So if we did just, okay, so I'm, my buy-in question would still need to be answered there before I could say I was okay with it. I just don't want to be left with a, you know, default decision.
Well, we still have the option, once we have numbers, to go back.
To reopen.
To reopen. I mean, it's not like we're...
So we have, yeah, you have made the decision, but you're...
We own Frabel and we own DOB.
We can always go back to them.
That's always there. That's Plan B.
Right.
If the money looks bad, or something else happens, then...
And, and Mr. Becker, we'll make sure that, hear you loud and clear about the need for buy-in there.
I think you'll probably get it, but if it's not there, we have to reevaluate it.
I agree.
Yeah.
So, and is buy-in on that list?
Yep.
Buy-in? Yeah, I just want to make sure it's all captured.
She did that up above.
Oh, did she?
Other, other thoughts on this, folks, before we move on? I want to, I want to make sure that we stay on schedule here. Anything else? Okay. So with that in mind, we'll wait for Laurie to advance, Laurie's working hard here in terms of, can you advance the slide, Laurie? So, folks, we're going to, we're going to move on, and we have two other questions that we're going to answer within the next several minutes here. We're going to pull back a little bit, and we're going to take a broader look at the district. And we're going to look at some areas of concerns that were presented. Based on the three task forces, again, you looked at the document a little earlier, short and long term, there were a few things that came, that came up. And again, I'll let you take a look at this. This is divided by West Side, East Side. West Side under capacity, and some areas of concern. We're looking at boundary change, you know, possibility. Options include boundary changes, consolidation, grade configuration, magnet schools. For East Side capacity, boundary change, addition to Preble, grade reconfiguration, and magnet schools. So with that, I'd like you to keep that in mind. And I'd like you to consider those options within the following factors that can be considered. Obviously, financial impacts, financial efficiencies, transportation, attractiveness of the district to families, of course, open enrollment is an issue, equity of programming, access, staffing, impact of families, on families. So again, as we're considering options, here are some factors to consider for each of those options. And so with that in mind, maybe I'll, I'll just stop. And again, I wanted to cover that very quickly. In a moment, we're going to ask about pros and cons as it relates to those options. Before we ask that question, board members, do you have any questions about those options? Laurie, maybe if you could just go back one slide, let's just make sure that there, that, I know you've seen this, but just any questions about these, these options for consideration? Go ahead, Ms. Becker.
Do we have, I, I guess, and I'm especially thinking about a new incoming administration in the state with clearly different budgeting priorities than we've had in years past? Are, are any, I mean, are we in any kind of compelling, you know, compelling financial need to hurry up and consolidate something? I mean, efficiency is good, obviously, and there's places under capacity, but this is not, I mean, is an emergency, right? I mean, financial?
Mr. ...
If I could, I think one of the things that we've been talking about, and it keeps coming forward, is the importance of the staffing issue. What consolidating could afford us is the ability to right-size schools and afford us additional resource, so that we could support perhaps more social workers, more folks, counselors, additional mental health workers, things like that. As we start to look at, if I'm running a school where I have 14 students in a classroom, that's very nice, but it isn't as efficient as if I had 20. And I could, if I'm in a school where I have 40 students, I could run two sections of 20. And so it's really looking at the possibilities of what could be. And that's what we've been talking about and exploring, because we do have some class sizes that are very small. And we know that if we had, in our larger schools, we can see it when we look at, at our schools, that we can oftentimes deliver more, leverage more resource within that school, and even, and even provide additional programming because of that. So that's been our conversation around the right sizing of schools. So that's, that's an, an important variable, I think, to be able to have more opportunities and more supports for students. And I, I just want to remind folks that our additional needs continue to grow, and the concern that we have collectively, to your point, Mr. Becker, we don't know what this budget's going to look like. We really don't. We have a new biennium coming up, and so we've been moving very cautiously, very cautiously. So any, any kind of leveraging of additional resource that we can possibly gain, especially as you start to look at some of the schools that have large, large numbers of open space or open enrollment, that you could do some things like that to, to put that on the table for further consideration. Because we really feel, even if we are in good standing and get the same amount of dollars that we currently have, we still are going to find ourselves needing more additional resources for our kids if we want to leverage the very best programming. And the social, emotional, and support pieces seem to grow. In special education, in the last two years, we've, or three years, we've added how many million of additions?
Six.
Six million. And so anytime we can reassign some of these dollars, repurpose them for more students' gain is, is really what potentially we could garner. We haven't fully explored that, but we know some things certainly point us in that direction that would tell us that, so.
Board members, before we go into pros and cons, Laurie, did you have something to say?
If I could.
Please.
So I would just like to share that having spent time with the Boundary Task Force, and Mike, correct me if you think I'm misrepresenting it, is that I feel like part of the conversation there was that, there was a realization that, obviously, the, the easiest solution to the inequity in enrollment is just to shift everybody west, right? And recognizing that that is not a rational decision in this community, right? Like, people will not accept that as a good option, as changing everybody's boundaries, just moving everybody west. But I also think there was a strong feeling that having schools being underutilized was also not a, not a way they wanted to continue, right? Like, recognizing that there's needs on the East Side, but concerned about adding more capacity on the East Side when you still have so much capacity, especially at the high school level, when you looked at how many empty seats you have district-wide at a high school level. And so, so I think that the conversations have been around, how do you sort of address the fact that we do have space on the West Side? And I think the other thing is, is that when we look at possibilities within the district, just at the last board meeting, it was brought forward the idea that the transitional team had about having this wonderful space for students who come back to our district after they graduate to be serviced for several more years and having their own space. Like, we could have that within our district if we can free up space by consolidation, right? We could look at parent education centers, another thing that we've discussed in this district for several years, if we can free up space. We know we're going to need a head start, place for our head start on the West Side if we get that grant. Again, if we can free up space, those are things we can do that are already within our existing owned resources, rather than purchasing or looking for additional resources. So I just wanted to share that, because I think that what the sense I received from the Boundary Task Force, and I don't know, Mike, would you agree with that? Is that they felt like the district has enough resource, we just need to better utilize it. And I, and again, I think that was part of their push for, how do you create some attractors on the West Side? But I think as we've done some of that, it is challenging to relocate or get people to, to drive across the river to take kids to other programming, just, I think, just because of the, you know, ability to do that, along with conflicts of work and, and things like that. And transportation was brought up in all of the task force. But I think, again, that the issues surrounding transportation continues to be a financial one. And so just another factor as we think about, how do you create more resource?
Before we jump into pros and cons, other clarifying questions? Do you have about any of the options that have been presented here? So we're going to go fast here, folks, but let's just, let's, let's go around and let's talk about pros and cons for each. Let's start with the pros. Again, you have the options on the screen in front of you, in your packet. You have some factors to consider that may prompt your thinking. Let's start with pros. Anyone can start?
I think the consolidation pros we've heard.
Mm-hmm. Anyone, anyone want to add to the pro related to consolidation?
I think it should be explored.
I think we have to do it the lens of, like, expansion of services, because I think when people think consolidation, they think of shrinking services. So we have to be able to talk about it in a way that it's not, that, that's not what we mean.
Right.
Because that's terrifying to people.
Mm-hmm. Other pros?
I think magnet schools, we think the right ones, we've had great success with Aldo and DaVinci as magnet schools.
Mm-hmm.
It's a potentially a way to fill some space over on the West Side.
Ms. McQuaes, you're shaking your head in agreement?
I agree.
We have no K8s on the West Side.
Especially Bob, with the green reconfiguration.
Yeah, I mean, it just, we have no K8s, and that's the big, part of the big draw, I think, of Aldo and DaVinci. Of course, DaVinci has other draws, but I think, and I would, are we, with consolidation, would we consider, I mean, even... would we consider, I mean, even making west a 612?
That would be grade reconfiguration.
But consolidating is.
Okay.
Some crossover there, right?
Yes. Work with me.
Others, pros?
Well, I know we've looked at this before. One of the pros to boundary changes, but, is to get rid of some of our split schools that go to different middle schools. But I know the Boundary Committee looked at that, and we've looked at that over and over. There's no real easy answer to that. So it's, I don't know that it's possible to have 100% of our elementary schools not split.
Mr. Becker, you want to weigh in on the pro?
Yeah, I guess, I just, it's, it's, all I have to say about pros, I, I don't, I have to go on the record and say there's not enough pros to boundary changes or consolidation from what I've heard so far that I could be on record as saying that I have pros for those today, right now.
What about pros for others?
I mean, like, magnets are good. I mean, we have, but magnets are good if people will, if people will go. And I, I think, I don't know if we're getting closer to that answer, and if, there might be one answer for secondary that isn't the same answer for elementary. But I, magnet schools, that's, and attractor programs, that's, that's a voluntary movement if you can get the movement, I think. Grade configuration, that certainly is not, that certainly could be seen as an advantage, possibly, to, you know, we have people, people choose K eights because they like the structure of K eight and the mix of kids in a K eight. Not all families, but some choose in for that reason.
Yes, Dr. Lang.
Can I ask a question? And maybe it's, it's, it's really grade configuration, but it addresses almost, in terms of leveraging resource, you could garner more resource. And I know that a neighboring school district is there where they will put together, like, the, the primary grades, and so you'll have K one, two. And then you can leverage more classes in that, in those areas. And then in a neighboring school nearby, instead of consolidating and putting them all under one roof, you can leverage more resource and supports to expand those resources by putting the four, five, six, or three, four, five, or something like that, so that part of the, part of what we're seeing in our tiny schools is really you'll have one section. But if you have more kinders, more first grade, like we have at the ELCs, you can run more efficient class sizes. So it, it doesn't take away, it actually gives you more resource without, you know, you can leverage more.
And you preserve the neighborhood school concept.
Yes, the neighborhood gets bigger. The neighborhood gets bigger.
Neighborhood gets bigger, but there's, there's proximity, there's still.
See, I'd rather have a K eight than make, make, you know, because then you have parents have, they have children in five different schools, whereas if you have a K eight. Well, but if you have one, two, three, four, five, and then middle school and high school, there's potentially four, one, yeah, four different schools that you've got kids in if you have that many kids.
Can you distill that a little, a bit so that, so Laurie can put that on the board as a pro? I'm trying to work that through my little mind. How, say more, say more about that, can you?
So, what, for where I was going?
Exactly. I, I think.
Let's say, we, we are blessed sometimes in our community, we have two elementary schools that are very close by each other, for example, on the west side. And, and what'll happen is that they'll find themselves in fourth grade with a disproportionate number that all of a sudden we have to add an additional teacher. And if all the fourth grade would be in those two schools, you'd have a bigger number, and you could run nice-sized class sizes without getting any small ones. It's, it's a staffing protocol. And for each, you know, we want to make sure, so you can garner efficiencies if you have more sections of whatever grade level you're at. I, I would offer, and, and in our, in our thinking, you would only want to do this in schools that were nearby each other. And we do have walkable schools, not a lot of them, but there are a couple that you could potentially configure that way. And I know that neighboring districts have done that. I think it's a model that's been used in a lot of school districts, I would, I would expect because of that reason. And, and it also affords, you know, in terms of the professional development of, of staff, I mean, there's some real important variables for K one, two, kind of thing, primary and grades.
Other, other pros, one more minute on pros. Ms. Shelton? Yeah, thank you. I saw, I saw some heads nodding, Dr. Warren.
We're talking about pros, not cons.
We're talking about pros.
There's support for Michelle, just to.
Katie gave support for it.
Yep.
I gave support.
Should we look or not, is really what we're asking.
Yep, that's right.
We just want to know deeply.
Should, should it go on the board as a, as a pro?
To look at.
Yep, that's right.
That's the pro. If there's pro, that's the.
And all of these are just, do you want us to look?
Board members, you're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Shelton?
I mean, I think for me, all of these can, there can be pros for all of this. It's not about them specifically as a task or an action, but how you do it, right? If you, if you do it right, it's a pro. If you do it terribly, it is a con. And so we could sit here all day, but to me, whether any of these things, what comes to mind is, do we have the buy-in? Do, do communities and families feel good about it? Do they feel like they're part of the process? Are we being forward-thinking? Are we being innovative? Are we being, are we, are we moving forward in education in a way where we're, we're creating an exciting opportunity for people to say, yes, I want to send my kids to the school district because wow, look at all the neat things they're doing? Are we meeting the kid, needs of the kids, right? I mean, I see this as being a family, and every school is like a separate family member, right, who has individual needs, and they have to reflect what they're doing and the culture and all that stuff. So for me, like, this can be a pro or a con, but it's all of those things for me that is the lens that I'm thinking about how we do it.
Do other board members agree with that? I appreciate that. Do other board members agree with that, that, that there is a pro for everything that's on this list?
The only one, I don't think there's a pro to addition to Preble.
Yeah, the task.
The task force specifically said that, yeah. And I don't see a pro to making that school allowing, because if we add on to Preble and that school continues to grow, we'll have room to be at 94% again, but now we'll have 2,400 students instead of 22.
Do other board members agree with that? Is there anyone that disagrees with that? Any other pros? Thank you for that.
I'm still not on the, I'm still not on the, I'm not actively opposing looking at anything, but I, I need to be on the record as not having my name attached to a pro of boundary changes or consolidation.
Absolutely.
Noted, yep. Let's switch to.
What's your resistance to consolidation?
Well, that's because, depending what is meant by consolidation, that's closing a building. I mean, there, I guess there's things that could be.
Not as Michelle described it.
No, but to, that, I don't know if that's a, that's some kind of a, not, that's a little bit of a different thing between a.
So, but it's a, but it's a consolidation thing.
It's a combination consolidation.
Yeah, grade reconfiguration.
Right, I think, I think that, I, I think what, I think I would have to, yeah, to me, that's a grade reconfiguration more than it's, I mean, I get it. It's, I don't want to spend time on semantics, but I, I don't, I, I'm far short of, I'm far short of convinced that it's time to look at closing a building.
Right, right.
Yep, so let's.
And I want to go on record too and say absolutely.
So let's, let's, let's turn this and talk about the cons, and let's start there, please.
Let me just say one other thing. I think you're right. I think when we talk about pros, it's not saying we're going to do these things, but there, there are things that could be beneficial looking at them in the long term.
Correct.
Having a dialogue about it.
Yep. So, so with that, let's, let's start the conversation there about cons, okay? Because I, I hear what you're saying about hesitating, you know, speaking to the pros as it relates to consolidation and boundaries. Can you, can you articulate the con of those two items?
I think the public likes their neighborhood schools too much. And I've been in, I, I think there are some, there are some advantages to smaller communities. I think there's, sometimes it works, it works well.
And there's a culture of people, I mean, people send their kids to schools that they went to, and that feels good. And there's an emotional response that is tied to your neighborhood school. And when that closes, sometimes it, it goes deep.
But at, at the other, and I, at the other end of it, our, our responsibility for, for fiscal responsibility, we may not be able to afford the luxury of small schools forever. I mean, I agree, people want their schools, and they, they like their schools and things like that, but, but looking further down the road, we may not have the finances to be able to, or, or we may have large class sizes, or we may have fewer social, you know, we just, I mean, there's a, there's a trade-off to saying we want these small schools. Well, then we don't have the resources to provide, provide smaller class sizes across the district or more social workers.
Let's push on more cons.
We're saying we set our own budget could come back someday too.
So again, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to keep pushing on this, just because I want to, I want to get you out of, out of here. As it relates to cons, we spoke to, to boundaries and consolidation, the con there. What other cons do you have as you look at this list? Anyone?
I guess, I'm wondering, Andrew didn't say why he had a con against boundaries specifically. When I talk boundaries, I'm just looking at little pieces that would make sense. I'm not looking at the whole district boundary change kind of a thing.
Mr. Becker, you want to speak to that?
Well, I just don't think it, I just don't think it can really accomplish any of the, the fixes here. I mean, sure, if we, if there's a boundary, if there's some little boundary change that maybe gets an elementary not going to split middle schools or something, great. But like it was said before, to fix any enrollment problems with boundary changes, you'd have to just shift everyone over one whole school. It just doesn't, you'd have schools and other schools attendance areas and things that just wouldn't.
Others? Cons?
I would say a con is, these are complicated issues, right? These are not like, these are things that take time and discussion, and you have to get into the weeds, and changes, any time change is hard. And so a con would be how, you know, or consideration would be, how do we, how do we address that head-on and recognize that that is tough?
No matter what decision, it has to be done right. Sort of, it's akin to what you were saying with pros, correct?
Yep.
Others? Ms. McCoy, what are you thinking?
I've got nothing, sorry.
Any other cons? I think so, yep. Yep. I'm sorry. Do you want to weigh in, John?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry to keep this going. When we look at the need for the new, the new innovation school, it's there, the kids need it. There, there are associated costs with the, the enrollment and the class size and the, the amount of support we want to give those students, and also to have a, a great location. Those don't come without a significant cost. We'll be looking deeply internally to find efficiencies. That's something that, a process that we're, we're looking for. So in addition to the growing needs of the students and working to fund that, part of the way that we're meeting the needs of the, the students is by creating this much-needed school, but it's with a price tag. And so we have to be really careful and really reflective at how deeply we look at where we find those efficiencies. So when, when John says it's about the money, it's, it's not, it's not about the money to just be efficient or, or make cut. It's about looking at where we can look really deeply to, to weigh those things out so that we can add the needed supports, not just for the, the new innovation school, but kids in general when we're here that they're coming with much, much bigger needs and the support isn't there. We will be looking at all areas, all departments, and look for efficiencies to, to support that. But it's around finding those resources so that we have the flexibility of meeting our strategic need areas.
Okay, let's do some prioritizing. We have a list of pros and cons on the, the board here that Laurie wrote. And I think we need to go back a slide, I'm sorry. Let's look at the pros and cons that we have here. And again, with the different options that are under consideration. Why don't you just kind of think and, thank you, think and reflect for a moment. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to have a conversation about, again, given what you've discussed, what should be the priority items, right? Let's try to prioritize these options to the degree that you can, understanding, again, that your administrators are going to bring to you, they're going to take these options, and with your input, they're going to bring to you some recommendations. I'm going to give you a minute to kind of think about that, and then we'll have a conversation, okay? We'll start with the highest priority items in just a moment. We're, we're, we're considering the pros and cons, and we're prioritizing to the degree that we can the options under consideration.
Options.
Right? So that, so that when the administrators are putting together a set of recommendations for you, they'll have your input as it relates to, to prioritized items. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, not at all, no problem.
That does, thank you.
Can I just ask you to clarify a question? Can somebody tell me off the top of their head which elementary schools are split as far as the, the attendance going on to middle school? Which ones are split?
So, Dody, Dody, Sullivan, Wilder, Nickelway.
Beaumont. Yeah, Sullivan.
Jackson.
Eisenhower, Danes.
We have, we have a map.
That some of the kids go on to Washington, some go on to Edison, some go on to.
You keep, I, I believe it's in the Boundary Task Force stuff, or the facility.
I've seen the map.
I'll dig it out.
Off the top of my head, I want to.
Yeah, we have a, like, a family tree chart. It shows where the splits go.
Yeah.
I have a book here that I can give it to you.
You can get it.
Pull it up if you want to take the time right now.
I, I just, it's kind of impacting, one of my pros might be to emphasize getting rid of the splits, and I'm thinking if some of them would even be conducive to going K eight if they had room.
So, the splits between East or Edison and Washington are Eisenhower, Sullivan, and Wilder. The splits between Washington and Lombardi are Dody and Lane Light. And then the splits between Lombardi and Franklin are Beaumont and Tank.
Jackson is what?
No, Jackson.
Is all Washington.
Is all Frank, Franklin.
Or Franklin.
Yes.
But they choice to Lombardi.
Well, we have a lot of choicing taking place, so when we look at actually, weren't, but that's where they're. They're so close to being.
Any, any questions from Mike on that? Okay, so again, we've, we've considered the options, right? We've gone through the pros and cons. Now, I'd ask for your consideration of how to prioritize these items. With the understanding that again, your administrators are going to bring back to you, Board, they're going to take these options and they're going to create a set of recommendations, right? So you're not deciding on those specific recommendations. You're helping the administration know how they should put those recommendations together. So again, as you look through that list, considering the conversation you just had, what would be a high priority item?
Magnet, magnet schools on the west side.
Say why.
Magnet schools.
Say more, say why.
Oh, I'd like to see more students pulled over to the west side.
Who agrees? Who disagrees? Who wants to follow up on that?
People do it. I mean, yes, I mean, I, I think I would, I would love to, to do it. I'm, I'm still, I'm, I'm hesitant to say that doing any one of these things is something that I could say I could attach a high priority take to right now. I mean, there's, I'm, as my independent, individual opinion, I'd be, I, there's places where I would be willing to some extent to just invest resources now without having to find an, an offset. I know that's not unlimited, but it's not a either or for me. But I guess, sure, if there's a magnet school that solves an overcrowding and pulls people to the west side for elementary and they'll do it, good. We've just been, we've talked about it since like my first Board term. And I mean, my first Board term of my first time, we've talked about attractor programs on the other side of the river.
So, so if it, if it works, great.
Yeah.
Got it. Everyone, I see some heads nodding. Anyone think that's a bad idea?
I'm not sure. My concern would be, would those magnet schools on the west side just pull kids out of the west side schools? And would people from the east side actually travel to the west side to go to those schools?
Task force.
Yeah. I think, I mean, I still think a K eight would be the most. I think the most attractive, and I would, and I would do it under the consolidation concept. Because I think to your point, that people like K eights a lot.
I think they do too.
And, and that would potentially be a sell in terms of, in terms of consolidating, consolidating schools.
Dr. Warren.
But I'm not sure about, again, I, I don't know if we'd pull, if we relieve east side crowding with, with any, and I don't even know if we'd do that with a K eight necessarily. I don't know how much, like Andrew said, how much people are willing to travel across it.
And help me, just for clarification, K eight on the west side, correct?
Yeah.
Thoughts on that? Yes?
I would say K eights on the west side, but I would also consider looking at some of our split schools on the east side. Make it a K eight and then shift it to the west side high school. Have them all go to the west side high school. Case in point, if you look at the numbers for Jody, they've got space right now to accommodate a K eight. Half of them are already going to Lombardi and Southwest. If you have, if you get rid of the split and have every, have them do the K eight there and then go on to Southwest.
Does, does this fall under the umbrella of grade configuration?
It's a combination.
We're talking about?
Yeah, it is grade configuration. That's my.
Well, it's very configuration of boundary change too, because you're getting rid of the split.
Done, done appropriately, right? Done, I, I wanna, I wanna.
Meaningful.
Meaning, meaningful, thoughtful.
Right. Right.
Okay. Thoughts on that? Others?
Say it, say it again, Katie.
Well, I'm just looking at, I like the idea of a K eight. I think it's, we need to have K eights on the west side as well. I think that's part of Aldo's appeal. And I'd like to know how many people from the west side are actually enrolled at Aldo? If they had their own Aldo type K eight. That, yeah, that let them, bring them back to the west side.
Same with DaVinci then too.
Right.
Yeah, we could look at that, yeah.
The research supports K eight schools.
It does, it does.
In terms of the protective factors of middle school students.
It does. That, so what I was suggesting, Laura, and I don't wanna ruffle any feathers, but just as an example, if you take a look at Dody, who has a capacity of close to two hundred, there are two hundred students under. If you make a Dody, which is a split between Lombardi and.
Washington.
Washington. And send, make that a K eight and then send them all to Southwest.
I like the idea of K eight.
There's that certain camaraderie of everybody going to the same high school. It's.
My, my family loved the K eight model at Aldo.
Let's pause just for a moment. I wanna return to that. Mike, did you wanna, you had a question?
All right, I guess I have a clarification. Are you looking at a, a standard K eight like a Red Smith K eight? Or a specialty school K eight like a DaVinci or an Aldo?
I mean, Red, Red Smith is also very popular and that's just a standard K eight for the same. I think it's the K eight part that's most appealing.
I think DaVinci has, it's, it's a more fine tuned student population than Aldo. I think the concept of the K eight itself is strong enough.
Yeah.
To draw people to that. DaVinci, I think DaVinci can be replicated on the west side. I think we certainly have the students to fill it.
Yeah, but would they come from, yeah. And the question is, would they come from our east side schools to the west side? Or would they empty out more of our west side schools?
I, I would offer that I think we should price both and bring them back for the Board for consideration. And I believe, Mike, what you're referencing is the fact that a comprehensive K eight that, that the middle school basically aligns with the other middle schools in terms of course offerings. Red Smith is closer to that. They have Family Consumer Science. They have all of those components. Whereas Aldo doesn't look the same. They have a very specialized program. So would the Board be adverse to us even considering almost a magnet school model in a K eight as well? So, you know, so.
Anyone think that's a bad idea that, that shouldn't be considered?
And when you say magnet model, what do you mean?
Well, a DaVinci, for example, is a magnet, a K eight.
Right, but I'm, right, but that's got a very, I mean, the choice to DaVinci is very limited.
So then perhaps maybe it's a, a full two-way bilingual pathway in a K eight.
Could be anything, it's just not, just.
So it wouldn't be a traditional Red Smith style K eights?
It would be a comprehensive Red, Red Smith, potentially. It could be, it could be that. And we know what that already costs. But if there's, you know, usually there's significantly more resources I would offer, depending upon what programming is offered. So we just, we can look at that. If you're amenable to us looking, we'll look.
What other, what other priorities? And I should, I should note here that we're gonna go back and we're gonna take a look at, thankfully, we're, we're, in addition to recording this, we're gonna have film of this. We're gonna be able to go back and we're going to be able to put together kind of a more distilled list. Are there other priorities that we wanna make sure that we capture? Other things that are important to Board members that you wanna share with administrators as they're putting together their recommendations?
Can I ask a question? Students who leave DaVinci, where are they going?
John could tell you probably the best.
Well.
Cause we just did.
They go, they're going to a variety of different places. Some remain in our district and go to our area high schools. Some return to their outside districts from which they came. And others make, make selection for, for private schools as well. So those are, are the different factors. The, the majority of students, vast majority of students that are from our district stay in our district. We've had a number of conversations on how best to support transition of our DaVinci students. There have been a few that have wanted to keep it clustered as a smaller, supported magnet. There have been, there have been a number of others who disagree with that, saying from the philosophy of once you get to high school, your needs and interest areas vary so significantly that to have a supported cluster that can be all things to all people at very high levels becomes challenging. For example, if I want to be a doctor and I'm a gifted student versus I want to be an engineer and I'm a gifted student versus I want to be a playwright and I, and I'm a gifted student, how do we offer the highest level courses for all those kids within a cohort of twenty-five to fifty students if we were, if we're expanding? So that's one of the underlying philosophies for why we've had them spread out into the various high schools within the district because there, there's an ability to serve those students in, in that capacity. But we're currently surveying former students and surveying current parents as well as staff gathering input around that very question. How can we best facilitate the successful transition and support of our gifted learners as they emerge out of, out of DaVinci and, and look to their high school options?
Thank you, Sean.
Sure.
Thanks. What else? What other high, one last minute on high priority items? Anything that we've missed, anything that we haven't talked about? Okay, what about, what about things that you, you hate? That shouldn't, that should be either prioritized very low or that should be taken off the list altogether?
Harvey said mine.
Taking Preble off the list?
Yeah.
Is there anyone that wants to, to keep Preble, addition to Preble on the list for consideration? In other words, is there any reason, is there any reason to have administrators come back with a recommendation that includes in addition to Preble?
I would say no to that.
No? Mr. Becker?
Not as a space addition solution. If there was some other, if there was a building modification to Preble that made life easier there.
Sure, understood.
But not intending to expand capacity.
Make your space things.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wouldn't say that that should, but yeah.
Other Board members agree? Noted. Is there anything else on this list of options that should be taken off? That you don't want to see included in recommendations from administrators?
Did we talk about boundary, were there boundary changes? I feel like we haven't really said anything about it.
We talked about it in terms of consolidating, we wanna split elementary, so we did add.
Did you, did you wanna add something else?
Making, making.
Just thinking like, yeah, I mean, for me, like significant boundary changes are like a no, a no go.
Define significant.
I don't know what I even mean by that.
The boundary changes that would shift everybody to the west side.
But actually even.
Entire district withdrawing a boundary.
Wholesale changes.
Yeah, that's, that's a good description. Katie.
Ms. Maloney?
Well, historically, I mean, there, there have been boundary changes and it's, it's, they've been announced and people just kind of, when Southwest was, but typically it's been based on building a new school.
Right.
So even if, you know, for the people who want the fifth high school in the far east side, there will be boundary changes. Because you have to, so I, I don't know that you can ever completely take boundary changes off the table.
But wholesale, like you said, boundary changes.
Right.
Using boundary changes to fill our west side schools.
Yes.
Is not something I'm interested in doing.
Let's pause there. Is, is, what do other Board members feel about that? Does everyone want to take wholesale boundary changes as, as we've defined them, I, I think broadly? Do we wanna take that off the table?
And when I say wholesale, I'm talking, we shift Preble kids to east, we shift east kids to west, we shift west kids to Southwest.
So the domino boundary changes.
Yes, that's my wholesale. That's what I'm describing when I say that.
Okay, I'm gonna, in my mind, it's gonna be domino boundary changes.
Okay, dominoes, fine.
It's a better visual image for me.
But again, we don't, we're, and we're not, we, we don't have numbers, but we're talking about big, significant wholesale shifts that lead to other shifts, right?
Right.
Your domino.
Like dominoes, yeah.
Is that the sense of the Board?
Yes.
Am I seeing head nods? What else?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
We have boundary changes that create more split feeder schools.
That create more?
Is that off the table?
I would prefer not to create more because I mean, we have.
I just, I just think we need to know, like if that's, if that's a direction we can't go, then.
I, the direction I'd rather go in is limiting, reducing the number of split schools. Because to create, yeah, then it, yeah.
Unless it's a trade off. You know, I mean, if there's a compelling reason to, to make a boundary change that splits an elementary school, can we, can we find other places to unsplit other elementary schools?
We're not taking it off the table completely. We don't like it as a standalone unless there's a real compelling reason for doing it. Board members, do you agree with that?
What would be a compelling reason?
If we, if we unsplit elementary schools.
If we, if we create more splits.
If there's, if there's some, I know from the Boundary Committee, there's some little pockets of the city that, that you look at and you go, why aren't they going to this school?
Oh, and actually weren't some of those even corrected with the, the referendum? There was like a handful.
We haven't changed any boundaries with the referendum.
So those, you know, those little, those little tweaks that make sense in terms of easier transportation for families, that kinda stuff, I'm believing.
But actually, more often than not, those are gonna unsplit. Those are gonna group, cause I know there was a.
Correct, right.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's less, it's not gonna split, okay.
So again, just, I just wanna make sure we have agreement on, on, on this. Again, we don't love the idea of, of, what, what were you?
Domino boundary.
Right.
Wholesale.
No, for the.
Oh, the split feeders.
We don't, we don't, we don't, we don't love the idea. We're not taking it off, off the table completely unless there's a really compelling reason. Is that a fair, I'm seeing head, Mr. Becker, okay? Other thoughts, other things that you want to take off the table or if we want clarification on?
I'll just ask, I'm just.
Please.
Yeah, no, we just won't get into the rest, but what about demographic factors when looking at boundary changes? Are there any limitations, restrictions on that? And again, I'm just looking to give us some frameworks so that we don't come back with something that you pull around for that.
I think there has to be geographic logic. I think that message was learned when we had tried to do a little bit more demographic balancing with.
Right.
Unconventional.
The two thousand eight referendum that was.
People are not, just not open to that. If you wanna have, you need to get, if, if there's, if we wanna help mix different groups of people together, we need to do it by providing the right programs, not by making people do it.
Explain, say more about making geographic logic.
Well, so there were, there were proposals in the, in earlier referendums that would have you drive past one school to get to your school for the purposes of balancing out demographics. And that was not accepted by the public.
Right.
Other, other thoughts on, on Lori's demographics question?
I, I, just a programmatic piece that I have particular information on within my area is bilingual education. And sometimes, much like we have small track elementaries, we also sometimes have very small tracks of bilingual within a school. And so that, that would be a factor that if we, if we do things that split those further, that that could have a negative impact as well. We, we would have a greater need to consolidate partially because of what we can do when we have economy of scale. But then also because of our limited resource as far as our pool of highly qualified bilingual educators. So we wouldn't wanna do something that just threw double track bilingual programs to the wind. So we wouldn't want to do something that just threw double-track bilingual programs to the wind where they were scattered in even more schools. We would want to, at least from my standpoint, we'd want to consider how those could consolidate, as well as, as Andrew was saying, we want to be geographically considerate, but then also think about economic and other demographic disproportionality and equity in creating greater balance within the schools if possible.
If you don't mind, any other thoughts? I want to be real respectful of your time. We're going to move along here. But any other thoughts as it relates to demographics? Anything else, Lori? Anything that we may have missed? Again, we want to avoid a situation where your administration brings to you a proposal that you, you know, that you say, this isn't even close to what we want, right? Yes, please.
And I'm going to go back to something Lori said and something that, in a consolidation, I think we've never had... We don't and have not entertained completely shuttering a school without repurposing it. Would the board be amenable to doing consolidation and repurposing a school for a different purpose or a part of the school for a different purpose? So maybe more community space and moving some students out of there to a neighboring school, for example, or a K-8. Is that something... So you're doing some consolidation, but you're also repurposing for a community space or professional learning space or parent education space, which is something we... If that's... Is that amenable in a proposal to bring forward?
Board members, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Yes?
I would say no. There's no... I mean, again, there's no urgency that I see today to any time, certainly for at least the next year, take a neighborhood school completely away. And so moving at, you know, I don't... I can't see myself supporting that. Could some future circumstances happen, I suppose, but I just don't... I can't think of how I could end up supporting that within the next year.
Dr. Langfield?
Just a clarification. What is the timeline? Because we talked about short-term immediate goals. Obviously, to the conversation, I don't anticipate that anything of these, many of these that we're even talking about would happen next year. Is that... And John would like to say something.
Sure, John, go ahead.
I guess I see this as a tale of two halves, and just so I'm clear for the financial perspective.
Can you do the item from his...
The board approved a school, and now we're accommodating staffing for that school. We don't have extra revenue to pay for that school. We're going to have to shift. Where our budget is next year is undetermined. But we have salaries and benefits that clearly are accelerating in cost. We are not anticipating additional revenue. So when I say a tale of two halves, I heard earlier in the meeting about NEW and J-DAL. J-DAL is expanding. We don't have additional funds. We have a million dollars invested in that school already for X number of students. So I see this very differently financially. What John said earlier is accurate. We are going through an audit to make sure that we can look at our staffing. We're not pulling monies that we don't have to staff that. We don't have additional revenues. The second piece of this meeting took a far different turn in that this is longer term than you're considering here. And for referendum purposes, we clearly don't have, with declining enrollment at this particular state, additional monies to pay for all options. I'm not saying you can't do options as a net revenue neutral. I'm fully aware of that. But the majority of things we discussed this evening could incur larger costs. We're positioned potentially for a referendum in a year to two, which leads more to this side of the conversation. So again, I just want to make sure you knew financially where we're at, where it's not determined with the uncertainty in the biennial, but I hope I gave you some of that idea.
One of the things I'm thinking about, Andrew, both of the things you've just said, and I'm trying to think how I can put this clearly, and I probably won't come out well because I'm thinking as I'm talking. We have students that have significant needs that go beyond the classroom, that go beyond a physical space. And we constantly are talking about how we need more social workers, we need more counselors, we need more support staff, we need dental care, we need vision, we need kitchen staff, we need kitchen space. We need all of these things for our kids that go beyond the physical space of a classroom. I would never vote to close a school building because of what you said. I mean, that's... I think it sends a message to the community. If we can use our physical space and shift it in different ways, that ensures that the education opportunities that communities have remains and grows and becomes more robust, and we can save money to do the other services that we need, our kids know our kids need, that would be a win.
How are we saving money?
Well, because if we are... If the facilities shift, if we consolidate, or like Michelle was saying, if you...
You just said you would never vote for that.
I don't want to vote to shut, like, a building down.
Oh, I see.
But the purpose may change. It may be a multi-use space. It may be classrooms in there with trauma-informed care rooms, with a physician's office, with a, you know, I'm just thinking more about a community model.
Yeah.
So that's kind of... Sorry if I wasn't clear about that, but that's kind of where I'm going.
Mr. Becker, am I understanding that your concern would be the short-term closing of a school? I think that you...
I don't like the idea at all, but I recognize I don't have a five-year or a 10-year...
Sure, sure.
Crystal ball. I suppose if there's a school built for 400 that has 71 kids in it and the school next to it is underutilized, too...
Okay.
Okay, obviously, reality would set in there somewhere. But I am also, especially with administration coming in with stated, clearly stated, different budget priorities, I certainly would not close a building till I knew what districts were or were not able to decide for themselves as far as their own budgets under a new administration. That starts in a few weeks.
Understood. Other final thoughts as it relates to, again... Oh, please, Lori, go ahead.
So I just kind of want to be clear, too, because we haven't talked about this process in a while. So when we originally did the Boundary Task Force, we had talked about that really being sort of the high-level discussion around boundaries and changes and so forth. And then we had talked about them really identifying the issues and areas. And then we would come back and then have stakeholder conversations, right? So I just want to make sure that that's clear, that that's the plan going forward, is that we would come to you with some recommendations and say, based on when we look at numbers and things like that, here's what we think might work. And then have you say, we think those are some viable options, and now we want to take that to the stakeholder groups to have the further conversation over their inputs. So I just wanted to be clear that that was... So that this... We understood this was not a short-term piece, that this was going to be a year or longer process to move some things, so.
Makes sense. Other final thoughts before we wrap up, folks? Anything else, again, building on what Lori just said? Is there anything else that is we're talking about the next step, which is, again, recommendations coming forward, that should, again, that you prioritize as very high or that you prioritize as very low? Final thoughts? Anything that we missed? Anything that you wish we would have covered as it relates to this conversation? Is everyone clear on next steps, again, as Lori outlined? Okay. So with that, I'll thank you for the opportunity to be with you again. With that, I'll turn things back over to Dr. Warren.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Joe. It was helpful to have you here for moderating the meeting. Are there any last final thoughts or questions from the board?
I have a question.
Okay.
Are there documents that could help me, that have been prepared in the past, Michelle, that could help me to understand some of the pieces we talked about tonight with, like, the boundaries and...
Is that all still online?
So on the website, all of the... All three task forces are all on the website.
Okay.
So if you go to referendum, Facility Master Plan referendum on the District menu.
Okay.
If you go there, it'll take you to all of the documentation from all the presentations, the final reports, the data that they looked at themselves. We kept all of that documented in the public record of it.
Thank you.
It'll be more information than you ever want.
Just a little holiday light reading.
Yes. Go ahead.
I would offer that there is a tremendous amount of information that we covered, and some of us have engaged in these thinking processes for many, many, many hours. And as you think forward, just to please know that Mike or myself, if you can get questions to us or Lori, will get you the answers, because this is very, very critical. I know that there will be people watching this and having questions as well. They certainly can contact our Communications Department or just call the main number, and we'll get you those answers, because I think that this becomes a very important public conversation where our community input is key. As we move forward, as John mentioned, potential referendum in the couple of years, we have to have all the voices in this discussion. So it's a... There's the immediate piece, and that we'll have to bring back sooner than later to address NEW School of Innovation and J-DAL. But the other pieces, we're going to have to really spend a fair amount of time making sure that all the questions are answered, because it's... To your point, Christina, it's complex. It's very complex, so.
I want to thank everybody who brought forward the materials you prepared. And I know everybody has already spent, like you said, a lot of time thinking about this. And we look forward to hearing back with more specifics at some point.
I think we... If I could offer, we would like to, I think, regroup a bit and figure out a timeline and bring that forward, perhaps even... I was going to say by Monday, but I don't think we can get that far because our calendars wouldn't match. But I would say by the first meeting in Jan... First or second meeting, second meeting in January, we should have a timeline. But we've got to move on the one school, maybe before that. So look for some information in January. And again, I think it would be good if we could archive any questions that come our way and keep those in a running document so that we can get those published to the greater community and to all of the board members as well. That make sense? Okay.
All right. Thanks again. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.